And I will turn it over to Jeff and Donald from our DPW department. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor. I just want to say Jeffrey is going to be leading the presentation tonight, and I got to give credit to Scott Ryder for the interesting name and part of the Joint Facilities Committee meeting for the name of the roof referendum project. So with that, I will, I will give it to Jeffrey.
Great. Let me just get this shared so everybody can take a look. Give me one moment here. Share. All right, is everybody able to see my screen for the roof referendum 2021? Great. So, good evening, members of council. We're just presenting the Joint Facilities Committee roof referendum for 2021. Here. And you know, myself, Jeff Leano, Deputy Director, Public Works, Donald Noon's Director, we're going to be going over slideshow tonight. And what we have, what we're recommending. Just a quick overview, the roof referendum for 2021, the discussion topics we'd like to cover is an industry average for roofing systems. Our roofing condition analysis, the history of town roofing, our current roof strategy, roof referendum 2021, our proposed strategy and explanation, and then the timeline that we're estimating this to be completed, and then, you know, the recommendation. I just want to touch briefly on some of the industry averages for roofing systems. As everybody is very familiar with, we've been doing a lot of school roof replacements, and after a 20-year stay, we're eligible for reimbursement. So this kind of coincides with what an expected commercial roof system, you know, is 20 years is pretty much where we are. A lot of roofing systems, as you can see on the chart, different types, they kind of, they kind of flow between 15 and 30 years, 20, 25 being the most common. And where the town lines up is we have a lot of EP, EPDM type and modified built-ups, which are very common from the 80s and the 90s. Here's just a quick example of where we find these different types of roofing systems across the town. You know, again, I'm not going to go through all the list, but, you know, again, we pretty much have a little bit of everything across our town portfolio, which makes it kind of challenging on how to replace it, when to time it, and obviously, some things are a little bit more expensive than, say, you know, a standard shingle roof like on someone's house versus a built-up roof, and the work and labor that's involved with that. We had our roofs looked at by a professional, myself and BG. We went out and surveyed everything. This is a, much like the pavement index, that everybody's very familiar with the Rhodes projects. Roofs have a similar system where they have an excellent being the best system, and then a poor condition. And, you know, I'm not going to read off every example of what they are, but it just kind of shows like the evolution, much like that pavement index everybody kind of knows and is familiar with. Going over our current portfolio, you see on this spreadsheet, we have quite a few that are landing in the poor to marginal category. And you kind of look at the ages, they're, they're at 20 years or they're, they're going quite a bit north of that. When it breaks down, I have a nice graph a little bit later on that kind of shows the amount of buildings' roof age and, you know, kind of why we're, we're here tonight going over this proposed referendum. I just want to give a quick look at what an excellent roof was. This is a picture of Phase 2 Henry Barnard when it was just being finished. Everything is in perfect condition. This is an excellent roof. You know, you're going to have 20, 25 years of trouble-free maintenance with a system like this. Another roof here, you know, is a good roof. This is a picture of the Pearl Street Library. This is another system that is in really good condition. It's worth investing in, we can maintain it. It's, you know, it has plenty of service life left. Once we start getting into fare, it's a really good time to start budgeting and planning for replacement because, you know, roofs are expensive, and you want to, you know, kind of think of these things forward. You're kind of in the middle of its lifespan, it's kind of like your commuter car. It's in good condition, you're going to put a little bit of money into it, but you know it's starting to get there. Marginal, once, once we get to a marginal roof, and as you can see, the seams are starting to deteriorate, we're having separation of where the membranes come together. This is the point where, you know, it's really at the end of its useful life. At this point, you know, we should be really looking at replacing it and only, you know, buying ourselves like a year or two, you know, really just to kind of get the replacement in place, not really do any heavy investment into it. This is, you know, like a clunker sitting in your yard leaking oil. It's not, it's not something that you're going to really put money into. And then unfortunately, we have a poor-conditioned roof. The system has completely failed. So what you really end up doing is just chasing around leaks that you have. There's really nothing you can do for a system as this, besides just, like I said, chase leaks. The system is, you know, there's no investment in type of system, and it's just really, placement's the only option. So this was a slide I was alluding to a little earlier about our current roofing portfolio. We, you know, the, the green graph is showing our number of facilities based on the index of where they are from excellent to poor. And then the blue graph is just kind of showing the age of that roofing system. And, you know, where we seem to find ourselves is 14 facilities are at that 25-year mark on average, which is, you know, we're really in line with that marginal-to-poor rating system, and it's just time for a heavy, you know, look at roofing and what to do. I just wanted to touch on kind of what, you know, how, how we got here in the roofing history across the town. Back in between 2007, 2009, the Department of Public Works assumed this responsibility for the Board of Ed buildings. There was about 13 sites over 1 million square feet of roof, which is a huge amount of roof to maintain and manage. Unfortunately, the BOE roofs are also on the biggest buildings in town, so, you know, just, it just makes it the largest portfolio that DPW has to manage. And trying to manage that type of roof and the type of investment, it gets a little cumbersome under traditional limits. When you look at, you know, roofs outside of Henry Barnard's three phases, Enfield High, and, you know, the JFK renovation that's going on, there's still approximately 550,000 square feet of roof to address across the town, which is, you know, still a very large chunk of roofing. You know, roofing with non-school facilities is traditionally easier because town buildings, municipal buildings are just inherently smaller. 170,000 square feet of roof was managed by DPW excluding WPCF at that time. And, you know, the nice thing is WPCF has been completely rehabbed, so that's a, that's a nice new roof, so we don't have a lot to worry about in that. But again, with a town building being smaller, 13,000 square feet is the average roof size of the municipal building. Again, they're just smaller, 13,000 square feet is just cheaper because it's just the volume. Once you start getting into a Board of Ed property, 72,000 square feet is the average. It's, it's a little higher because places like the middle school and the high school with such large roofs, I kind of skews that number a little bit, but even if you look at Henry Barnard Phase 3, that was approximately, or with all three phases, excuse me, that was approximately 70,000 square feet, give or take. So again, it kind of falls in line with that average. These are just very large roofing numbers out of sight. So our current roof replacement strategy, we've been roofing at pre-referendum limits. And, you know, unfortunately, it's taken us about three years, three phases, if you will, to do each one of the school roofs when we, when we put in, you know, that $670,000 or so to get a roof replacement done. You know, what happens is each phase is another year, and we all know that cost of living and, you know, other inflationary drivers can affect the market. And, you know, 3%, 4% is not unusual for construction materials. And everything, you know, obviously is based on inflation, so it might be higher, it might be lower. But, you know, in reality, you're buying less roof every year. So the more that we kind of push it along, it's more expensive to do the same roof the following season. On average, unfortunately, when we have an older roofing portfolio, it also means that there's a lot more repairs and chasing leaks. This was a snapshot out of our expense at the time, and we were spending about $76,000 a year to replace roof systems. And if, as you saw earlier, a lot of them were in that marginal-to-poor condition where we really shouldn't be repairing, we should be replacing. So this kind of, you know, we're chasing our tail a little bit here. $76,000 is a lot of expense just to maintain a leaking roof. And again, this doesn't really reflect some of the soft costs that are harder to quantify. When we get leaks at night, we're having our custodians come in, you know, so we can open the building, so we're drying carpets. There's fire alarm systems, there's lighting systems, other electrical components that can or have been damaged from roof leaks. So the 76,000 is just a direct spend to a roofing contractor. That's not incurring some of the other fees with getting our alarm systems back online and making sure the buildings can open the next day without any adverse reaction. So the strategy with this referendum, roof referendum 2021, you know, why, why were these roofs chosen? The list was compiled, like I said earlier, with a townwide survey. We, we looked at it, we, we looked at building department data for permits being pulled and getting roof ages, and we were investigating this with a consultant, with myself, and Buildings and Ground Staff. We, we went out and looked at every single roof and did all the non-destructive testing and analysis that we could. Our importance order, it's, it's really listed on the prioritization of which is going to fail first and what's going to be the most disruptive across town. So we really don't have a lot of space to displace a large group or department if we can't open that building, if we have to do an emergency replacement. We're going to have to shut down, which is very interesting, especially if you think about like a classroom, you know, where we lose a wing, that's six, seven classrooms that we, we wouldn't be able to occupy while, you know, roof workers being formed. So funding alternatives, you know, without a referendum, we're really doing CIP only, and it would just be, you know, we're at a point now where we really, really need to look at multiple CIP roof projects each year to really just kind of get ourselves on the, on the ball so we can manage it a little bit better in the future. It's, it's just an aggressive project that has to be looked at, and there's just different ways of doing it, referendum being one, and then aggressive CIP approach as another. So this, this proposed referendum, roof referendum 2021, is a $13.6 million investment. We're estimating about $5.8 billion. Yes. Are you able to hear me okay up there? No problem. If anybody has a problem, let me know, and I'll stop and repeat a slide. And if we're good where we are, I'll just continue forward. Not a problem, Mr. Mayor. So again, this particular roof referendum for 2021, we're proposing a $13.6 million roof investment. It's estimated that we're going to receive about $5.8 million in state reimbursement. Again, I'm just saying that we're estimating just based on historical information from our past projects. We've been roughly receiving about 70% reimbursement from the state of Connecticut on eligible roofs. So this is really a great thing. So when you look at 13.6, we're getting 5.8 back. So, you know, again, it's, it's just a really nice thing, we can do different things with it. But with this particular plan, we're, we're proposing of replacing approximately 406,000 square feet of roof over the town and BOE sites in over a five-year scope. So this, this program kind of resembles a Rhodes program, very similar in the strategy and the deployment. And what this will do is it will position for us to invest for future roof replacement projects, places like the high school and even JFK. Doesn't seem like all that, you know, far in the future, 20 years seems like a long time, but even just the high school, we, we finished that project, you know, we're getting on to six years almost. So in 15 years, that roof is going to be at its expected life expectancy. So it's just get ourselves here, we can start planning for these really large roofs like the high schools, a huge roof, and it's just going to take multiple years of investment. So when it's time for it to go, we're, we're well in position to just pull the trigger and have it, and, you know, not, not incur these multiple phases and whatnot. So this is the list, this is the proposed strategy. And again, it's a five-year list, and it's looking at priority based on condition, and then, you know, disruption. It focuses on the elementary schools, Parkman being in a phase. And again, it's phased because there's, I'm, I'm looking at not only doing the original section of building, but the additions. So it, the timeline for the reimbursement from the state with that 20 years coincides when that write-off happened or the sign-off from the state. So we want to make sure that we do a roof at a school where we're eligible. We want to make sure that we receive our reimbursement. And, you know, the, the roof referendum is planning to do that, so we are getting that money that we can get. So again, Parkman would be phased, and that would be the first roof to go. It's 27 years old, it's a built-up, and, you know, again, we're going to be looking at doing a nice system that we're doing at Henry Barnard PPO, and then making sure that we have other things. There's a lot of interest in renewables, so making sure the roofs are solar-ready, if you will. And we're going to plan for this, all of our roofs. We want to make sure that we're looking for, not just for roofing, but if there's opportunities for, you know, green investment, that we're ready to pull the trigger. Because no one wants to put a solar panel on a 20-year-old roof. Everybody wants to have a new roof because solar panels have 20, 25-year life expectancy. So having new roofs positions us better for other things and other avenues at the town. Looks like they would want to pursue, and it'd actually be a good idea, especially in the green market. It seems like costs have come down quite a bit. It's another way to divert costs. Again, then the first year of public safety, the police station, that roof is pretty much the original from the day that was built. And again, it's a shingle roof, it, it just needs to, needs to go. We, we are there, it's, it's at 28 years old. Again, HB Stowe, that school, same, same position. The additions, we want to hold out, that's why it's phased. We want to make sure we're eligible for all of our reimbursements, and we don't, are, you know, don't miss out on an opportunity to get money that we could have turned back to the town for other, other purposes. Again, now Alcorn, so with the, the new projects and the new focus in the Alcorn facility, putting a lot of people and programs in there, it's an older roof, 27 years old, fruit and scramble. You know, again, this, this roof would be done in its, you know, in its entirety. At this point, we're projecting that all the roofs are going to be eligible for reimbursement, so this is going to go in one phase. Enfield Street School, right now about 17 years old. Again, we're going to be at that age time where we'd be eligible for all the state reimbursement. And then we're going to circle back to where we, we started off, Parkman and Stowe, in the final phase of the elementary schools. We're going to get those last couple additions roofs. So now all the roofing systems are pretty much the same, spot-on, and everything's kind of starting from a fresh slate. And then lastly, what's interesting about this particular referendum 2021 is the Enfield Annex, the former Fermi High School. This is a very large roof, this is the largest roof that's in the town's portfolio for a municipal structure. So this is addressing this whole roof, we're putting a lot of programming in here, and it's just a really good time to look. Now that we're really utilizing the building and putting more departments and more functionality to this building, it's, it's a roof that, without a referendum, is unattainable unless we do lots of, lots of savings and lots of things. Again, this project all kind of comes out to about $13.6 million, but it really positions us for, for future investment and savings. So again, it kind of gets ours, gets ourselves out of the spot we're in now, positions us for a little bit easier progress moving forward. And it's really a, a great idea, and Joint Facility's been working really hard on this. So, you know, the strategy, this, again, this only is going to work if we continue with Hesterville Memorial, Eli Whitney, through CIP. We started with the initial phase, and that's under design and review, and that's, that's moving forward. But we have to continue that CIP approach and just complete these schools through CIP. The, the roof referendum is just assuming that this is the case. Henry Barnard, with the phasing, the reimbursements need to be reinvested with that as well so we can, you know, finish off that last little addition at Henry Barnard. What that will do is we'll put all of our schools, our elementary schools, you know, back at ground one. You know, we're, we're starting off with everything being new, it's a lot easier to manage. And then roof referendum 2021, the funding, really, it's just, those properties are just, without a seat, with, without a referendum, in CIP, it's multiple phases. So it's just getting all that off the table, and then we can focus on easier things that can be managed through CIP. And again, the Enfield Annex, just such a large roof without a referendum, it'd be very difficult to do that in phase. You know, again, we're looking at 5.8 million in potential reimbursements from the state. Again, it, it changes every year, and it's released by the, the state on what the reimbursement rates are. But, you know, projected on historical averages, we've been getting about 70%, which is really great. So we're only really paying for 30% of the roof, state's covering the costs for the rest. So no harm in, in looking for that reimbursement. We plan to look for that reimbursement because it would be foolish not to. We can do a couple things with this thing. We can, we can utilize that reimbursement money to replace more roofs and extend the scope of roof, the roof referendum, and keep roofing, you know, and we can get all the town facilities with new roofs. Or, you know, we can do something else, save it for some of the larger roofs. So there's, there's lots of things we can do with the reimbursement. Another thing is if we, and that's if we reinvest it. We don't reinvest it, we could always put it down towards debt services. We could use that to kind of fund or pay down the debt. And I'll defer to the Finance Director on how that all works because I'm, I'm definitely not a finance person. But it's $5.8 million that will give us flexibility on how we'd like to spend it in two different ways. Again, this would limit the reach, though, of the roof referendum. We wouldn't be able to go do all those extra town buildings. But I am going to say town buildings and municipal buildings are, in averages, well, well smaller, they're a lot easier to phase just because they're, they're well within reach of a traditional CIP approach. And then, again, we can always, you know, like I said, we can always do something with that. This is just a proposed continuation list. With the, with the roof referendum 2021, much like Rhodes, everything is going to go out to, to bid, and going to go to the streets. So these are projected prices, and if, if things are favorable and there's extra money, much like the continuation list with Rhodes, why not keep roofing with the money that we have? So we would just keep tackling projects on the, on the town side based on what's left. Getting it out there, so we just keep roofing, no problems, and just kind of, just march down the line. These are some of the continuation items I'd like to look into if that was the case. And, you know, from what I understand, if we don't list it, we can't do it. So I want to make sure that we, we put as much up there so we can paint with the biggest brush that we're allowed to paint with. Again, this is a little dated, but this is just kind of showing what the mill rate could potentially be or may not be. I don't want to speak too greatly to it because, again, this is something I defer to the Finance Director, we'd make sure that's still proper. But it's just kind of giving you an idea of, you know, what, what it could do. What I do like to talk about, too, is just kind of like the current dates and times to, to get this referendum through. It's, it's, it's a long process, it, but it's, it moves really fast, and we're already in March, so it's really good that we're here today, or tonight, I should say, getting this out there. But to get it onto the ballot for the vote, we, we need to make sure that it's there for September. So again, just don't, you know, it's, it's a lot to do, but it's, it's something really great to pursue if there's a lot of interest in it. And I don't think I have much else to say other than our recommendations. You know, again, in, in an interest to protect the town's investment in the building program and our service capabilities, the roof referendum 2021 program should be implemented. Roof referendum will address a lot of the roofing issues of our current portfolio, especially that we're transferred from the Board of Ed acquisition for property maintenance. And the roof referendum would provide the town council time to save and really plan for the next phase of roofs, much like the roads and your cars. Nothing's forever, so we're always going to have to keep planning for that next big phase. And this is just a great program to get us and, and position us well for the future. And with that, I would like to say thank you for having me on tonight.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, thanks, Donald. So I'll open up the question and the comment. I'll first start with the members of the Facility Committee, Deputy Mayor Suzak and Counselor Sicola.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Donald. Actually, it's good to see you back, Jeff. So on the Alcorn building, we found out at facilities that that may be eligible for partial reimbursement because it has Board of Ed there, and it still is a Board of Ed building and has never been turned over to the town. So that being said, maybe, you know, and also, whatever happens this June for what our reimbursement will be, that will be locked in for the whole five years. So it locks in at around 70%. And also, we did send out to Green Bank our Henry Barnard roof, and we kind of gave them a timetable of what we're expecting for roofing. And Jeff's right, we got to look for, you know, other ways to lower our carbon footprint because it's the, I guess, conscious thing to do. Thank you.
Counselor Sicola, I want to put you in a spot, but I want to make sure you have a chance to speak. You're on a committee as well.
No, thank you. I mean, I don't really have much more to add than what was in the presentation. I just would like to say that the Joint Facilities Committee has worked a really long time on this. We have gone round and round on it. We've had a lot of good discussion on what should be involved, what kind of numbers would be palatable, how many town buildings versus school buildings should be included. And we really feel like this presentation and what we're putting forward is really the best option. It does both school, it does some town buildings, it's a good reimbursement rate. And honestly, it's a, it's a number that I think that is going to fly with the public. And it's got a great tag name, so that's good, too. So I, I think the key is education, education, education to the public. If we're going to do this, we've just got to make sure we get it out to the public and they understand exactly what we're trying to do, how long it's going to take. And if we don't do it, how much more money it's going to cost us. It's going to cost us, I don't know, three times more, I have no idea. A lot more if we do it in phases than if we do it under referendum. So I support it, I think the Joint Facility has done a great job with it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Crissati.
Yes, I think the, the committee has done a fantastic job, you know, in prioritizing the roofs that need to get to be done. I think Jeff and Don, you know, the research that they've done to present everything that was presented tonight. This is the second time that I've heard the, the proposal for the roof referendum. And tonight was really, you know, there's a couple of things that, that we really have to take a look at is, you know, the roofing history. I don't think that we really, the town really had a plan for, you know, every five years for something to be done to X amount of roofs. And now, there's a vision with this referendum, you know, especially with the plan, the timeline, and the, and the prioritizing of the roofs. I think that's, it's going to be very important. As Gina stated, education is very important. I think that, you know, a, a selling point is, you know, even if we, you know, took the aggressive CIP multiple roof projects that we've been doing, it would take years and years and years to even go through one round of what's being proposed right now. So I am of support of this project, and I, I think the, the hard work that DPW has put into this plan, and plus the, the cost and the reimbursement is very favorable.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor Mueller.
Real quick, I was wanting, this will be on the Town Manager's page as well. On Twitter, we'll push it out to get that education piece out.
I was waiting for my appropriate time to speak, but yes, we'll put it out tomorrow. And not only that, I think you've all been through this before, and education is the integral component here. So we're already working with Debbie, you know, with media as to how to get it out so it's not a one-time to put it on the website and then people forget about it. We're thinking if the council is inclined to move forward at the farmer's market this summer, we have a lot of people come through, we want to have a booth. We're going to have a exhibit there, hopefully staff it and have some of you. And what we're going to do this time, I'm, we're going to reach out to our bond counsel, Matt Ritter. Because in the past, we've always been unclear and uncertain about what we can say, when we can say it, and how we can say it. So our hands have been tied. And I, I think in some circumstances, we were too circumspect that we could have spoken out and expended funds up to us, and we didn't do it because we didn't know the rules. So as soon as you give the green light, hopefully I'm seeing it tonight, I'm going to reach out to him tomorrow, I want him to come in. He's going to educate us on what we can do, and we can then allocate proper resources to do it the right way and educate the public. And we'll look for other means, Debbie's looking at it, too, through our social media, but as I say, to get it out to the public. Because I think once they hear about the plan, how thoughtful it is going forward, I think they will support it. And likewise, the road referendum has been successful because people understand it. It's been every five years, now we're coming full circle. And I think when they see that we've done that again with the roofs, those are our two big expenditures, and once we get those under control for the future, we won't be in this predicament again. And I think we're going to have a very, I never thought I would say this, but an exciting budget process. I'm starting the department directors tomorrow to go into it, but we're guardedly optimistic. So I think when the public sees what we've been able to do with the budget this year, hopefully, if the state comes through with what they've said they're doing, I think they will be receptive, receptive to this to see that there's been vision with the council, fiscal responsibility, and I think we're in good shape. I will tell you, the, the ink isn't dry, and it's a moving target, but the House did vote on the COVID relief. We talked to Congressman Courtney this morning, both Carol Hall and Tom Arononye sent us from the state their counterparts what they think the us from the state, their counterparts, what they think the funding will be to Enfield. Um, it's quite significant. At this juncture, I, I don't need to be held to the numbers, but they've increased. The last time I heard it was 4 million to the board of ed and it was about eight to 10 million on the town side. Now it's $7 million on the board of ed, uh, side and 12.8 million to the town. Now certainly there will be strings attached. You'll have to look to see what impact COVID's had, but I think the restrictions are going to be minimal. And when it comes to the governor, they want it to get, come out, um, sooner than later. And that, that may be strict as to the timeframes that they have to disseminate it. But I will tell you, we're going to do our budget like we do our house budget. We're not counting on any inheritance or found gold pot in the backyard. We're going to do it according to what we have, what our needs are and what our means to pay are. We are, however, as we've been doing with Jeff, that's why we hired him, to come up with an inventory. What do we need to do going forward? What is the plan to paint every building, to carpet every building, uh, to put new boilers in, to do roofs and roads? So we have a plan going forward. So never again do we come to the voters and say, oh my gosh, you know, we didn't, we didn't put in the, uh, commitment and now we're, we're behind, leaks of roofing, we're wasting money on filling potholes. We'll have a plan. So likewise with the CIP, all of my directors have submitted a wish list of things that have been deferred over the last few years and that list will be ready for council consideration. So after the budget, when we know what the federal government has, uh, given us pass through the state, we will then be able to meet after that and you can go through it and say, what projects can we prioritize to invest into the future of Enfield and our residents for the good? And that's how I know you will spend that money. It won't be a one-time feel-good expenditure and have a big party. It'll be what can we do to invest that will put us in a good fiscal condition for the next couple of decades? So I think that the horizon a- and the future is bright. And I thank Jeff and, uh, Donald for their hard work and Joint Facilities. Incredible asset to have you folks and meet the way you do and the hours that you put in. And just as a by and by, I may have another exciting project for you to consider now that you may have the roads and roofs off your plate. Another one that will be just as challenging and incredibly, uh, uh, important to the town and we'll talk about that in the next couple of weeks.
So Jeff, Donald, two, well, actually three questions. When will the public hear? I mean, I think we're, we're actually going to be speaking later on, on how we're, we're going to hopefully loosen up our facilities usage policy. I think we have to have public hearings on both this and when we do the roads. I s- I didn't see your timeline, Jeff. When will be, is it? I know, but I didn't see exactly what, what month was it?
Yeah, I believe it was, uh, August 2nd. August, oh, sorry, Donald.
August, okay. I want to make sure that we, you know, we definitely have a public hearing, I mean, so if people can come and speak, I mean, I think it's important. And, you know, I think, in my understanding, you're sort of using the same, same tact with the roads where every five years we, or every five to six years, we sort of, you know, again, to manage the roads, we go out, sort of go out the referendum. Is that kind of the same process here now? Or maybe every five to six years along with the roads, the goal is the, the, the next line of roofs that may or may not need? Is that kind of what, you know, the tact is? So this is sort of like, again, almost like there were every five or six years in the roads, we're relooking at, you know, the issues, is the roof kind of the same idea here?
Well, we could always approach it that way, whether it would be five years or not, probably would be a little fast. You know, roofs, uh, last a little bit longer, but yeah, it's not a bad idea for some of the larger roofs.
Like every 10 years? I mean, when we sold the roads back in the nineties, when we, when we sold the roads, we said, look, this is the first phase, we're going to do it every five to six years. And so again, we were able to sort of plan out also from a finance perspective on how much this would go to debt if we did this every five or six. So just a suggestion, I'm not saying we have to, but maybe we have this, like, we plan tentatively every seven, eight years, whatever it may be, to, you know, those next phase, when those ones that are poor, uh, you know, are in good condition become fair or poor. Just as, it's just an idea that you guys can consider. I, I mean, I think it's, I think people buy into the sort of the, the multi, you know, that, that vision of, hey, here's the first group, but we also realize once we're done with these, the next group is going to be, you know, whatever, 10 years down the road.
I think, um, uh, to defend, uh, Donald and Jeff, their heads are spinning between consolidation and getting this information. So that's kind of, that's kind of our job to come up with that policy and that, whether or not they know it, that's my intention. I've talked to Donna about that too. And I think when the, the citizens understand that it'll be much less frequent for the roofs, and I, I kind of am thinking that we would stagger them. I think that you would do five and do roads and then do roofs and that way people, it's, it's much less to have to deal with. But the roofs are, obviously you get 30 years out on the roads. We have a lot of, a lot of, um, wear and tear, so you have to address them and there are a lot more roads than roofs. So we'll, we'll, we'll address that going forward.
Just a suggestion, that's all I mean.
But that, that's my plan.
Yeah, very, I mean, very good proposal.